Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for attending our webinar this afternoon entitled Membership Project Webinar. My name is Lori Sabata. I'm the Education Manager for AkuHoi and I'll be serving as the technical producer for the webinar today. And before we get started and I introduce our presenters for today, I'm just gonna take a few minutes to just go over some housekeeping items if you haven't attended a webinar before. The first thing I want to do is just make sure everyone can see and hear. So if you are seeing the first slide of the presentation and hearing me talk, if you wouldn't mind going to your control panel and finding, there's a little icon there with a hand where you can raise your hand, just go ahead and raise your hand and that lets me know that we're broadcasting okay. Oh, good, I'm seeing some hands. So that means things are working okay. I see a few hands, I'm just gonna wait for a few more to make sure we're generally broadcasting properly. And it looks like we're okay. It looks like everyone has raised their hand. Thank you for doing that, I appreciate it. I did want to talk about, we're gonna have about, the webinar lasts for an hour today. We're gonna have about 50 minutes of presentation and content and we're gonna leave about 10 minutes at the end of the presentation for discussion and questions and answers. And the way that we do that is we use sort of a chat feature, actually it's a question and answer feature. You'll see that on your control panel. If you have any questions at all, anytime during the presentation, please feel free to go ahead and type these questions into the question box. And I will be monitoring those questions throughout the presentation and then we'll read those for everyone to hear at the end of the presentation and our presenters will go ahead and answer those questions. So that's how we'll handle question and answers during the program today. And so now, like I said, we have about 50 minutes of content to get through, so I would like to go ahead and introduce our presenters for today. I would like to introduce Patty Martinez, who is our AkuHoi president, and Bonnie Salt Pronte, our AkuHoi Business Practices and Enhancements Director. I'm gonna hand it over to Patty to go ahead and get started.
Wonderful, thank you Lori. Well, welcome colleagues and thank you for attending today's webinar. I'm Patty Martinez and I do serve as a president and I'm currently working at Northern Illinois University. And I've served on the Executive Board for the past six and a half years. And Bonnie from Ithaca College serves as our Business Practices and Enhancements Director and has served on the Executive Board for the past three and a half years. So this webinar is a further effort to really educate our members about the Membership Structure Project that became a strategic initiative for us on the Executive Board as we addressed current and future rates and structure. So I'll take a short time to lay the foundation for where we started and then I'll turn it over to Bonnie, who chaired the group, so that she'll be able to share some data with you. So our goals for the webinar encompasses the following. We hope that you will understand the charge that we place before the Membership Project Task Force. As well, we will review a summary of the key information the Membership Task Force gathered to inform their decisions. You'll also have the opportunity to learn about the decisions made by the Executive Board regarding the membership rates and structures. And then you'll also learn about the next step within the membership discussion that will ultimately lead to the information presented to our institutional voting member delegates for further consideration. Next slide. The goal of our project then, within the AkuHoi Membership Structure Project, was really to determine the appropriate AkuHoi membership structure that responds to incorporating the association mission in serving as a global connector in its work. So this modeled really our overall mission and vision for AkuHoi. Next slide. Depicted within this slide are the members of the original task force and so I thank them for their service. They really had a monumental task. Our original task force members were made up of various institutions that were represented and provided many aspects and perspectives. One of their largest concerns of addressing this issue was that it was really multifaceted and had a great deal of depth that led in many directions. However, their work, through their work, they were able to present various recommendations and then as well ask the Board to conduct further work surrounding those recommendations. So on our next slide, we have listed the specific recommendations that came from the task force. So they recommended that the association transition from an institution-only membership with one vote to an institutional membership allowing all full-time staff at that member institution to have a vote. Further, they recommended the association allow for private companies whose sole purpose is to provide housing to college students at the sites on campus for specific off-campus properties to actually become a member of the association. Further recommendations, the associations keep the associate member category and allow the member to vote on the association business, whether that be through the electronic vote or actually at the business meeting that we hold at ACE. Further, the Membership Task Force review and selected membership categories and recommended a dues structure to be phased in over a two- or three-year period. They believed that this would replace the current housing capacity interval levels and they recommended a specific per-bed rate to be reflected within the rate structure. If the AkuHoi Board approved these recommendations, they also believed that there would be further constitution and bylaw revision that then obviously would be needed to be voted on by the membership. So this is further education for what will lead to that vote that we plan to have come before you as a membership. Next slide. So the members of the Executive Board took the recommendations from that task force and further formed a work group based on the recommendations that were provided to us. And the members of the work group are listed on this slide and I thank them for their diligent work as well. On the next slide, you'll see the tasks of the Membership Work Group was to review and address the various objectives that were presented to us by the Membership Task Force. They obviously needed to decide as to whether the current membership structure would be maintained or modified. They also were to look specifically at institutional membership, individual membership, corporate, as well as the chapters. They also needed to decide on how non-institutional student housing would be included in membership. And we defined non-institutional student housing to include for-profit housing operations, nonprofit foundations or corporations, as well as public-private partnerships and the staff that worked for those different constituents. As we continue on the project objective, further, we wanted them to share a recommendation or decision as to the definition of membership benefits for the various membership categories that we had. We also wanted to provide a decision to review the current rate structure and the potential future financial impact on the association, as well as on the individual institutions. Finally, we wanted a decision to be brought forward on defining a process to determine future as well as new membership categories. So as you can see, there was really a wealth and breadth to the process and the objectives that we wanted the work group to identify. And as we look at our next slide, really our basis for bringing this forward for consideration and action for the membership was that we found that the membership rate structure really did not have a clear rationale defined along with it. And we wanted to have a clear rationale and a circumstance defined with that. We also had added membership benefits without increasing the cost for those benefits that our members received. We continued to have requests from our members for increased benefits and enhancements to various services that AkuHoi offers. And we also wanted to talk about the engagement of our AkuHoi members who were unable to vote and felt like their voice may not have been represented at their individual institution. As well, with the advent of our public-private partnerships resurfacing or surfacing within the association and within the context of our institutions, we wanted to ensure that we would address how our public and private affiliates were actually being involved within the association. So further, on our next slide, we wanted to review the updates and enhancements that were included within our membership benefits and as well addressed and answered requests from our members. So on this slide, you see some of our benefits that have been added without increases to our membership rates. We included and created increased access to resources for our members. We added a digital talking stick magazine, as well as the digital journal. So those were now available via web versus only being in print. We established the AkuHoi core competencies within our body of knowledge. We've also enhanced and deepened the AkuHoi standards. We've offered virtual roundtables and specialty-focused webinars at no cost to our members. And we've also included the specialty library and have a dedicated librarian based specifically on research for our members. And then we've also enhanced the AkuHoi internship program that we've each year seen a steady increase, both from our host institutions, as well as interest from various members to participate within the internship program. Next slide. Further benefits have included upgrades within technology and programs, the creation of our online learning environment and enhancing that without travel expense for our members. We've upgraded the internship hosting site and made that available further online, as well as enhancing our enterprise data and website, which hopefully many of you have even visited and updated your profile on. Then we've entered into our placement exchange in partnership with NASPA and have also partnered with various other associations within the placement exchange as well. On the next slide, we have also ensured that campus housing is represented at various other consortiums and associations that we previously were not present at. The Council for Advancement of Standards, the Council of Higher Education and Management, Student Affairs and Higher Education Consortium, the Higher Ed Association Sustainability Consortium, as well as the Student Affairs Government Consortium. So as you can see, there's been really an extended benefit, as well as increased services that we've offered our members, which AkuHoi has really been positioned well in being able to do. So at this point, what I will do is turn it over to Bonnie, who will share more specific steps that were taken to address some of the recommendations that were made. Bonnie?
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm happy to join you for the webinar. As Patty mentioned, I was the Chair of the Membership Work Group for the Executive Board. And when this project came to our group, the very first thing that we identified was obviously that there were a lot of complex questions that needed to be answered in regards to membership and that we were really gonna need probably some outside expertise to try to help guide us through the process of researching each of the issues and ultimately making a recommendation to the Executive Board. So the first thing we did was look at hiring a consultant and we actually wanted to look for a firm that had lots of experience working on membership issues and especially had done a lot of work with higher education associations. And we were very fortunate to be able to hire McKinley Advisors based out of Washington, DC, and to work with one of their associates named Shelley Sener, who led us through the process of identifying different options and doing all of the necessary research to finally lead us to some recommendations. The first step that Shelley had us go through as a group before we really began work on the project was to talk about what the ultimate goal was for our membership project and ultimately as we were gonna look at different membership models, what was the goal for those models? And so we identified the two things that you see on this slide, that the ultimate goal was to try to have a project that removes barriers to people's involvement in AkuHoi and allows as many people as possible to take full advantage of what AkuHoi has to offer. And that as we looked at the membership model specifically, we wanted to make sure that we adopted a model that could adapt to changing conditions. So specifically, as an example, you know, as public-private partnerships have become more common, we have not had a membership structure currently that was easy to figure out where those organizations fit into our membership model. And so we were hoping that we would be able to identify a model in the future that would be able to adapt to those kinds of changes. If you look at the next slide, what you'll see is that we also spent some time at that point talking about, as we looked at different dues models, what were some of the filters that we were gonna use to try to measure the dues models against to determine whether we were finding the dues model that would be best for AkuHoi. And so the things that we thought as a group would be incredibly important in looking at dues models was, one, finding a model that was fair and consistent, where the dues were calculated in a way that was logical, it seemed equitable, and people could understand how the dues were calculated. We wanted to make sure that any model we picked was financially sustainable, so we knew we needed to look at what was the true cost to serve each of the institutions that we support and set our rates accordingly. We wanted to look at models that were value-driven, so what models could we identify where we could capitalize on as many opportunities as possible to add additional value to our members in AkuHoi? And finally, the last filter we wanted to look at was engagement-focused, that wherever we had the opportunity, we wanted to look at dues models, again, that increased opportunities for people to be broadly involved in AkuHoi and to have a depth of engagement with AkuHoi. So after we identified the overall project goals and the filters for the dues model, the next thing that we did on the next slide is look at kind of timing and a timeline for the process. What you will see is that we started this project in May of 2012 and for the first two months, we were really just doing planning. It's where we established our goals. We provided a whole lot of information to McKinley consultants so that they were able to have a sense of perspective about the history and data of AkuHoi. The next phase that we entered in from May through July of 2012 was what we called a research phase, where we did a number of telephone interviews and surveys and focus groups. Then after we had gathered all of that research, the next phase, which in some ways was the longest phase, was really looking at the different possible models that we could put in place. And then once we had identified the models that we thought might be the appropriate ones, to actually do a market test to see how our members responded to those models. And then finally, from February to now, actually, we've been working on the approval process where we've been advancing the final model, first to the Board for its discussion, feedback and approval, and now we're advancing it to the overall membership for your discussion and hopefully ultimately approval. On the next slide, you'll see some of kind of the high-level things that we did as we approached this project. Overall, we looked at, over the course of the project, six different membership dues models. There were variations within each, but we looked at open-access models where anybody, like we have now, whose institution belongs is a member of AkuHoi, versus defined-access models where only a certain number of people would have a membership. We looked at value-based models, where you have a basic membership package and then you have the opportunity to upgrade your membership by adding different kind of à la carte amenities. We looked at size-based models, which is the model that we currently have, where your rate is calculated based on the size of your institution. And we looked at flat-fee models. And we looked at constituency-based models, which is kind of a true à la carte approach, where you provide a very basic plan and then people build the package based on the appeal that certain different amenities or services you offer have for them. So we looked at the six models. During the process of doing that, we were in touch with over 2,500 members and prospective members who either participated in focus groups, in telephone interviews, or in surveys that we sent out. And then the task force met with Shelley Sener, our consultant, and as a group, at this point now, for over 17 months, we've been meeting and working, first as a work group, and then we've been working with the Executive Board for over nine months to look at this issue. The next slide, Lori?
So just to give you a little bit more information about specifically what research we did to try to inform the recommendations of this group, first of all, as soon as we had hired our consultants, they fortunately were able to join us at ACE in 2012. And at ACE, they did focus groups. And there were three focus groups that they conducted there. They did groups with institutional members, they did groups with public-private partnership companies, and they did a group with international members. In addition to that, the next phase then was a group of telephone interviews that were done. And in looking at doing those telephone interviews, not only did they want to talk to current members, they wanted to speak to current members who were in leadership roles in the organization, current members who are rank-and-file members, who may just participate through a conference or a webinar. They wanted to talk to certain number of central office staff and they also wanted to talk to folks who were not members in AkuHoi or were lapsed members in AkuHoi to gather some information from them as well. And then in addition to that, we did an electronic survey where we sent invitations out to everybody who was in the AkuHoi database at that time. So these are folks who have been members in AkuHoi over years. And it included all dues categories. It included the survey, current members, former members, and institutions that have never been members in AkuHoi, but who might be a member in the future. We had a 12.8 response rate to that survey, which means we got 1,732 completed surveys back and we got 873 surveys that were partially completed. Do you want to go to the next slide, Lori? After we gathered all of that research, we then, as I said in the timeline that we went over, looked at developing some possible models. We reviewed them in light of the filters and goals we had identified and ultimately came forward with some models that we wanted to test in a market test environment. So we did market testing. We did, for non-US members, a survey because of the different time zones, it was a little difficult to do telephone interviews. We sent invitations out to 105 non-US member contacts. Thirty-six of them were completed. We had a 34% response rate to that. And then for our US members, they conducted market test surveys over the phone with those members. They did 14 US institutional representatives and six public-private partnerships. And the 14 institutional representatives represented institutions at all of the different levels of membership categories that we were proposing. If you want to go to the next slide, I'll just walk you through what were the questions that we were trying to answer and some of the information that we found from our research as we went through the process. The first question that we were trying to look at was whether we should adopt a new membership rate structure. And if we were going to adopt a rate structure, should it meet the following principles? Create a dues structure that is more equitable between members and covers the institutional costs to serve. So we knew from the research that we did that there is a particular cost for every institutional member of AkuHoi. And we looked at it in a couple of different ways, from the cost to serve for just the publications that we mail you every month, all the way up to the cost to serve if we divide the cost of operating AkuHoi over the number of members that we have in AkuHoi, how much cost would each institution represent in that cost to serve? So we knew, we wanted to look at whether we should have a membership structure that covers more of that cost. Did we want a membership structure that would provide an adjustable rate for non-US institutions using the World Bank scale, so that we would be able to make it easier for institutions that are in developing countries to be able to financially access AkuHoi? And then should the structure create a phased-in approach to the rate adjustment that occurs over a reasonable period of time? The next slide, Lori? So what we found from the focus groups, the telephone interviews and the surveys, is that there indeed is a gap between the dues rates that we currently charge and the cost to serve each institutional member. We also found that the average number of individuals who are participating at each institution is greater than what we project. So if you think about the fact that we mail a certain number of talking sticks and a certain number of journals to each institution based on its size, we are assuming that you have that number of active members in AkuHoi. In fact, as we did gather data, what we found was that there were many more engaged members in AkuHoi than we thought in some of those membership categories. And we defined engagement by somebody being involved in AkuHoi in any of the educational offerings, on any of the committees that we had, that was identified as an engaged member. We noted that AkuHoi's smallest institutions have a very high level of participation in the first two tiers. On average, they have 2.78 members for the first tier and 2.56 active members for the next tier. In some cases, we noticed that institutions are actively engaged in AkuHoi and they contribute significantly to AkuHoi, bringing revenue to AkuHoi through their educational opportunities and their conferencing, not necessarily just through the dues structure. And we also noted that we had a number of institutions that were well above the current cap on our dues structure, so our current dues structure only goes up to 6,000 housing capacity and we had a number of institutions that had on-campus bed capacities of 10,000 or above. The next slide, Lori? A couple of other things that we noted about the dues structure was that we heard from our members that they are very engaged with AkuHoi and that if we had a dues increase and it was a reasonable increase and we were able to explain the reason for the increase, that a dues increase was unlikely to affect institutions from renewing their membership with AkuHoi. We learned that our members feel that the number of talking sticks and journals that they receive are adequate because even though they have more engaged members than that number, they are shared as necessary and they have access to them electronically. We learned that our members are happy with our current membership model. And we also heard that members would want a two- or three-year phase-in to be able to work in if it was a more significant increase in dues, to be able to work that into their budgeting cycle. Lori, if you turn to the next page. The next issue that we looked at and talked about was public-private partnerships and whether we should adopt a new membership structure for our public-private partnerships. If you go to the next slide, you'll see some of what we learned as we went through our research phase on this question. We learned that our public-private companies and our international members both are really looking for opportunities to be more actively engaged in AkuHoi. We learned that our institutional members are very concerned about what it means to grant full access to public-private partner companies in our organization. grant full access to public-private partner companies in our organization. Yet with that being said, 53% of our institutional focus group participants indicated that they felt that there had to be some change in this area, that we needed to find a different way or a better way to integrate public-private companies into Akuho I. If you go to the next slide, Lori? So as we did our market testing, we tested a model that would look at if public-private partnerships were to be more fully engaged as members in Akuho I. And what we found surprisingly actually was that 80% of the respondents were not supportive of allowing public-private companies to participate in Akuho as full members. So again, a continued concern by our current membership about what that would mean for Akuho. Part of what we heard through the market testing is that we would need to define more clearly who would be allowed in under a public-private partnership category. So what kind of relationship would need to exist between the company and the university in order for that organization to be qualified for this membership category? There was some concern specifically about making sure that it would not be extended to just for-profit kind of off-campus landlords who might be running an apartment complex adjacent to your campus. We did learn that public-private companies really value networking and the professional development opportunities that they have through Akuho I. And they're definitely looking for increased levels of engagement, including the opportunity to be able to hold leadership roles in Akuho I with committees and those kinds of things in the future. The next slide, Lori? We did learn from the market test that public-private partnerships would be willing to see an increase potentially in their dues. They may be supportive of that increase depending on what it is. We tested a market test where public-private partnerships would really pay in a way that was comparable to institutional members based on their bed count. What we learned from that market test is that housing capacity is too vague a term to really assess the dues rates for private companies and that many of the price points that we offered, the public-private partners were indicating were not going to be workable because they were too high in increase over the current structure. And so we really, at the end of the market test, felt like this was an area where there was going to need to be a lot further conversation because clearly we had not identified a model that we felt was going to work well for Akuho I, for its institutional members, and for the public-private partnerships. The next slide. The third question that we looked at was the number of institutional representatives and the print copies that we provide to institutions for those representatives. And basically here, we were looking at whether we should maintain the current number of representatives and the same number of print copies or we should do something differently. If you go to the next slide, Lori? When we did our research around this, what we found is that many of the institutions were indicating that although we were defining kind of engaged members as somebody who might have attended a conference or a webinar or those kinds of things, they thought the numbers that we were proposing for engaged individuals in each category was actually a little too high. They also shared with us that the copies of the talking stick and the journal that they currently receive are adequate because they share them as necessary. They shared with us that our members are happy with our current benefits model. They feel that they are receiving the benefits that they currently need. And at the same time, it was a little bit ironic because we did have a couple of people who said that they would like to see the talking stick and the journal move to online publications so that their members could have easier access. And they actually are both online already. So that helped identify for us just an educational area of focus for the future. If you move to the next slide. The next question that we looked at was voting rights. One of the issues that had been raised by the original task force and some members who have been actively engaged in Akuho is a concern about the structure that gives one vote to each institutional member and a question about whether that structure should be changed in the future. If you go to the next slide, Lori? What we found was that as part of the surveying that we did, we had members rate the privileges that we give to Akuho I members. Everything from their ability to participate in conferences, to receive publications, and all of, serve on committees, all of those things. And the item that was ranked the lowest was the ability to have voting rights. So while it's clear that for some very engaged individuals, this may be a concern, for the vast majority of our membership, they have no concern with the benefit structure that we have that currently gives one vote per institution. The next slide, Lori? And the next question we had was should we adopt a new membership rate structure? And if we did, we would want to make sure that it meets the following criteria as we discussed in the filters earlier. We want to make sure it's consistent and easy to understand. We thought a rate structure needed to slightly increase the rates for the lowest tier to make it better align with the actual cost we had to serve each institution. And we did note through our research, one of the things we did was benchmark against a number of other higher education professional organizations. And we found that we had the lowest dues rates compared to those other higher education professional organizations. We wanted to create a rate structure that created tiers or an additional tier or tiers for institutions that are over 6,000 beds so that we didn't have so many institutions that were capping out at the top of our membership structure. We wanted to identify a model that would help us better cover the actual cost of serving each institution. And we wanted to identify a model that ensured that we had adequate financial resources for Akuho I in the future and especially in order to be able to serve our members with any additional services or educational initiatives they might like in the future. The next slide, Lori? So this is the proposed dues rate structure that we came up with and proposed as a work group to the executive board. And I will briefly just kind of walk you through a little bit what you're looking at on this slide. As you may see, we are continuing to propose an institutional dues rate structure. So if your institution joins, everyone at the institution is a member. We are continuing to recommend that it's based upon your housing capacity within certain ranges. You will see that we added housing capacities for 6,001 to 10,000 beds. And then our cap capacity is now for institutions with over 10,000 beds. You will see in the second column, the number of members institutions that we currently have that fall into each of those tiers. The percentage of our total US membership that is represented in each of those tiers. The average number of individuals who are active at institutions of that size. So as you're reading this chart in the up to 500, on average, those institutions will have 2.78 members who are actively engaged or participate in some Akuho I function. You'll see the rate for that category as it is currently for this academic year 2013-14. And then you will see the proposed rate that we would recommend begin in 2014 for 2014-15. And as you look at the kind of how we calculated these rates, what you will see is it's based on a declining per-bed rate, starting at 54 cents per bed for the lowest tier and declining by four cents for each subsequent tier. And part of the rationale behind doing that was a belief that, you know, as we mentioned in some of the research we did earlier, that as you move up and up in institution size, there are institutions that are making significant contributions to Akuho I through their participation in conferences and other educational initiatives outside of the membership due structure. If you go to, oh, I'm sorry. And then the last column just indicates for you what percentage increase the new recommended rate is over the rate that is currently in existence for this year. Obviously, with the two biggest increases being at the tiers at the upper end, and that's a result of the fact that those rates had been capped previously because our category had capped out at 6,000. If you move to the next slide, what you will see is what we are proposing for non-US members for their membership rate structure. And basically, the change here has to do with, if you look to the far right, us adding a category for low-income countries. So we are recommending that based on the World Bank designations, that we have two different rate structures, one for high-income countries and one for low-income countries. And we are continuing to recommend that those be based on a percentage discount off what the US institutional dues rates are. So for instance, if you look at the up to 500 category, the US institutional dues rate in the green column would be $270. For those countries that are high-income countries, their dues rate is a 20% discount or $216. And then a low-income country, their dues rate would be a 40% discount or $162. And if you have question about the reason why we might discount, you know, institutional membership for our non-US members, part of the recognition in that discount is the fact that those members cannot as fully engage in Akuho I. One, because it's much more difficult and expensive for them to attend physically many of our educational conference offerings. But because of time zones and time differences, it's also very difficult for them to participate in a lot of our virtual, like our webinars, our virtual roundtables, and those kinds of things, which tend to be scheduled around, you know, our US time zones. If you go to the next slide. So what I would like to do now, having just gone over the research that we've done in the timeline, is turn it back to Patty. She's going to walk you through ultimately the motions that we forwarded to the executive board for their action and then talk about the timeline moving forward with the education process with our membership.
Thank you, Bonnie. So based on the information that was presented to the executive board from both the membership task force and the membership work group, the following slides are a summary of the actions that the executive board took. So before us was a motion to adopt a new Akuho I membership rate structure that met the following principles. We wanted to create a due structure that is more equitable between members and covers more of the institutional cost to serve, provides an adjusted rate for non-US institutions using the World Bank scale, and created a phased-in approach to the rate adjustment that occurs after a reasonable period of time. So the board did approve this motion and moved that forward for implementation. And part of that is also a part of what you as a overall membership will now vote on in the future. The second motion that we approved was to appoint a subcommittee of executive board members to explore and propose alternative options for a new public-private membership structure that defines who has access to this membership category, considers requests for increased levels of involvement for public-private staff. And the subcommittee will make recommendations to the executive board to act on by our conference in June in Washington DC at ACE 2014. So we're in the midst of putting together this subcommittee at this point. If I do have specific interests expressed to me from some of our members that perhaps may be on the webinar today in serving in this capacity, I would certainly be more than open to also seating some additional members on that so that we're able to expand this beyond just the executive board. So that is something that since we weren't able to have a successful recommendation come forward from the work group, from our market testing, that we needed to really go back to the drawing board with and really look at what that public-private membership structure would look like for the future. On our next slide, we also have the motion that we approved to maintain the current number of institutional representatives and the same number of print copies of the talking stick and journal would be distributed to each institution. Secondly, to maintain the current structure of Akuho I voting rights, which gives one vote to each institutional member, which was reflected within the scaling that the voting was considered to be the least important for our institutional members. And then finally, to accept the proposed revisions to the Akuho I institutional member due structure, which you viewed on the preceding charts that Bonnie reviewed with you. So on the next slide, you'll see what our next steps are in regards to our education of our members and also ultimately what will come forward to the vote. So next steps in relation to a vote being presented before the membership in regards to the membership due structure, which according to our constitution is required if the rate structure is different and a higher increase than HEPI, which is the Higher Education Price Index. So at this point today, we're in our webinar. From here, we will continue with a blog post that all of our members will have access to. So we'll continue to gather questions and provide answers to those questions so that people are able to make informed decisions when it comes before our voting members to cast their vote. At the beginning of December then, we'll have an email that will go out as official notice that voting will be open regarding our membership, institutional membership due structure on December 4th. And then that voting will also be sent reminders within mid-December and our voting will be closed December 18th. And then as well, we will send out a specific email to our voting CHOs as well as post-information on the website announcing the voting cast results. So everyone is able to understand and have that announced to them as far as what the vote was cast. So finally, on our next slide, we're going to open up for questions, but we also wanted you to have our contact information in front of you. Because if you have questions that either we don't have time for or if we're in need of further information to answer those adequately, you can email us directly and we'll place those answers on our Akuho I blog so that you have the information that you need to make an informed decision for your institution. So I think with the rest of our time, what we'd like to do is to be able to open it up for some questions that our members might have that are on the webinar today.
Yes, thank you Patty and Bonnie. I'm going to go ahead and just remind everyone to type in any questions that you have using your questions and answer box on your control panel. And I do have one question. The question is, are current private enterprises that are operating a university's entire housing program given voting rights for that institution?
Can you please repeat that again, Lori?
Sure. Are current private enterprises that are operating a university's entire housing program, are they given voting rights for that institution?
I would need to check on that to be sure, but I don't believe they are. At this point, if they are the housing operation of that university and they register as a university and not as a public-private company, the university is given voting rights. The public-private company would not be given voting rights.
Okay. Thank you. Bonnie, did you have anything to add or?
No, I was going to agree with what Patty was saying.
Okay. Actually, this is the only question that... Actually, this is the only question that was submitted at this time. If anyone has any other questions at this point, please go ahead and type them in. If not, as Patty mentioned, the contact information is on this slide, and if you think about it and have questions and want to email later, that's another way. I do have one more question. Does this plan include goals for membership? For example, we have just under 1,000 members at this time. What is the goal with these changes? I can read that again if you need me to.
Yeah, I can answer that. I think the question is asking whether part of the goal of this project was to increase membership in the future, and that was not a specific driver of this project, although certainly we would, we're always looking for opportunity to increase engagement and increase the number of members. But the real, the real goal of this was to look at the specific questions that were being asked, including whether we had a membership dues rate structure that kind of supported future initiatives that Akuhoi might want to undertake and aligned with the cost to serve the institutional members. So, there's not a specific membership target number if that's what the question is asking.
Okay.
Patty, would you agree?
Yes, that's accurate. Thank you. The other point that I would, I would share with our participants on the webinar today is that with this being recorded, this will also be placed on the website. So, if you would like other members at your institution to view the webinar and educate themselves and be able to provide you any feedback regarding being able to ask for your institution as a voting delegate, that will be available to you.
Okay. Thanks Patty. And I do have another question. What happens if these changes result in fewer members?
We actually did, that was part of the analysis that we did during our research phase, and we actually looked at, you know, any time that you change membership rate structure, our consultants would tell us, you take some risk that you have the potential of some attrition. And so, we actually looked at scenarios where, you know, what happened if we changed the model in the way that we're proposing and we lost 10% of our membership, or what happened if we changed the model and we lost 20% of our membership? And we are confident that with the model that we're proposing, that we would be able to, you know, continue to provide the full service and operations that we have through Akuhoi, even if we had some level of attrition as a result of these changes.
Okay. I have another question. When is the last time the rates were modified significantly?
Honestly, I don't remember the last time that we took a rate to the general membership for an increase, because it is within our constitution that the association is able to adjust rates in accordance with HEPI. It would just come before the membership if we are not in accordance with HEPI. But I certainly could gather that information and see if that has happened previously and make sure that that's on the blog.
Looks like we might be about out of questions. I think that's our last one. And so, I think that concludes our program for this afternoon. Patty and Bonnie, do you have anything else to?
Thank you all for your participation, and we're certainly available for other questions if they arise, and we look forward to your participation in the vote.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you Patty. Thank you Bonnie for presenting today, and thank you to our listening audience for attending and spending time with us this afternoon. And this webinar has been recorded and will be posted for viewing later. And thank you everyone, and have a great day.
Goodbye, everyone. Have a good day.
Bye, everyone. Take care.